Good evening, Bridgeport. Thanks for coming out. We had such a nice crowd. Very excited to see you all. It is 7:35. This is our Tuesday, December 10th meeting. We are called to order. Please rise and pledge a flag. Thank you, everyone. Angela, roll call, please.
Laura Hauck, Amy Hei.
Here.
Kyle Shank.
Here.
Megan Nolan.
Here.
Diane Gundrum.
Here.
Tony Heil.
Here.
Saba Alzayed.
Here. I just want to note for the record that Ms. Laura did mention, did reach out to us ahead of time and let us know that she would not be attending today. Mr. Bill, it's all you.
Yeah, Madam President, we were in executive session from approximately 7 o'clock to approximately 7:30 with regard to personnel issues.
Thank you, Mr. Bill. All right, we will start off on a very positive note, the presentation of the Officer of the Year Award. It would be Chief next.
If we could have Officer Bailey, can you come up to the podium with your wife and daughter and meet the mayor, and then I'll meet you down there in a minute? Good evening, Bridgeport. It's a great, a great evening for our Police Department. For the first time since 1992, we're, we are going to celebrate an Officer of the Year. The 2024 Officer of the Year is Officer Stephen Bailey. We're proud to announce the return of our formerly Annual Officer of the Year Award. The Awards Committee was tasked to review officers whose names were submitted to them for consideration. The following three officers were submitted to my officer, office for final consideration. Officer Mark Stillwagon, seated to the rear, Detective Sergeant Bill Murphy, and Officer Stephen Bailey. All officers included have had standout years with significant either statistics, arrests, or dedication to duty. Bridgeport's 2024 Officer of the Year, Officer Bailey, is a 34, is 34 years of age. He's a veteran of almost 11 years on the Bridgeport Borough PD. He's married to Melanie, and with them, they share a daughter, Giselle. Bailey enjoys working outdoors and is a member of our Traffic Safety Unit as well as a field training officer. Steve enjoys cars, car shows, and anything that's related to Philadelphia sports teams. For 2023, Officer Bailey had 10 misdemeanor felony arrests and attended to 422, or 424 calls for service. Bailey is a go-to officer who always makes time for our citizens and their needs. His attention to detail and follow-through are shining example of what a Bridgeport Police Officer should attempt to emulate. So I asked everybody in Bridgeport to take a moment and congratulation our 2024 Officer of the Year, Officer Stephen Bailey. Congratulations. Thank you for everything.
Thank you.
We get a couple pictures? I wanted to get in a picture with you. I'm not going to have a picture now. There she is. Something for your River Bar.
Thank you.
Thank you for sharing speed with us and making, making this, this a special first return year for Officer of the Year. Thank you.
Congratulations again. I do want to comment that all the kids look really cute today. I'm loving all the dresses and the diaper outfits. We, we don't have a packed agenda today, but I'm sure you guys want to get to Dino's and have, have some fun, so you're welcome to kind of head out if you'd like to, and if you want to hear about our budget, you're welcome to stay as well. All righty. That was exciting. I wanted to start by wishing everyone happy holidays. I'm really loving all the decorations. We're driving around town, and almost daily, we see new houses decorated up, and it's really just fun and whimsical, and just really, really beautiful. I think Bridgeport always goes out for all of our holidays, so thank you to all the residents that are getting involved and getting, you know, super excited for the holidays. I know the little kids are excited about and appreciate it, and I definitely am too. I have just a couple thoughts about my experience in the last couple of weeks that I wanted to share. I've had some residents come up to me and thank me for all the extra work that our police officers are doing on Union Street. Something that has continuously kind of come up in my conversations is the fact that we have a lot of people that don't stop at stop signs, and they do a lot of the rolling, which is pretty dangerous. You know, Bridgeport is very walkable, as we all know. We're constantly walking around with my kids and our friends, as you all probably do as well, so I think that, you know, one of the things that we are able to do is increase enforcement. I think the Chief has done a fantastic job in kind of pinpointing pain areas and communicating with the residents and identifying what areas are really spaces that we can maybe improve some of the enforcement, and then doing that. So, you know, personally, I've seen it a couple of times. I've had some residents come up to me a couple of times and mention it, so I just wanted to commend you on your great work as it's visible to the residents and hopefully continues to occur and maybe stops people in the future from doing such actions.
Thank you.
And then my final thought is, I know we, we've had a great loss in Bridgeport this week. I believe Dr. Robert Rittervato, our dentist in Bridgeport here, had passed away, so I wanted to send my condolences to his family, as I did not ever have the pleasure of meeting him or anyone in his family, but I know that Councilmember Kyle Shank has a couple of words he'd like to share.
Sure, I didn't prepare anything, but thank you, Madam President, for, for noting it in your, in your remarks. Dr. Rittervato and his family have been long time, I don't know that there's founding families in town, but I know that if they're, if that's a designation, that that family is one of them, so anytime we lose one of those pillars of the community, I think it's always nice if we recognize them up here. So Dr. Rittervato had his dental practice on Fourth Street for a long time, and his father before him was also a dentist in the area, so they've served families in Bridgeport and in our immediate vicinity for, I don't know, 40, 50 years probably plus. So thank you for including that in your remarks and my sympathies, and I think everybody's sympathies go out to the family.
Thank you, Mr. Shank. And then finally, I was chatting with Mr. Puzio, some of the crossing guards, and just wanted to kind of mention a couple of things that I think would be useful. We have, you know, an influx of kids that walk to school every morning. 8:37 is the opening of the school, and 8:30 is the closing, and within five minutes, people disperse pretty quickly, so we don't really have a lot of people that hang around, and the reason I bring it up is that we had a couple of instances with puppies that weren't very friendly to our little kids. We do have kindergartners in Bridgeport, so I do just kind of encourage everyone, if you're just walking your dog, or, you know, and it's not particularly muzzled, or if it tends to kind of get overwhelmed in crowds, maybe consider going before or after for your walk, or maybe just avoiding the school area altogether. I think once you kind of pass the, the immediate couple of, you know, block or two around the school, you won't have as many children, but there was some reported instances recently that I just wanted to bring to everyone's attention, and just for the safety of everyone, just wanted to mention. But that's all the remarks that I have, and then we can move on to our finance section. First up on the agenda here, we have for council consideration, Resolution 202449, establishing the 2025 fee schedule. Do we have a motion for our fee schedule?
Sub moved.
Second.
We have a motion for Mr. Shank, a second for Ms. Gundrum. Do we have any comments or questions from council or the public? All those in favor?
Aye.
Are there any opposed? That motion carries. Thank you. Next up for council consideration, we have Resolution 202450, establishing the municipal real estate tax mileage rate for 2025. And I think Mr. Truman did a really great job with his presentation in the past couple of meetings, kind of describing that in detail, but if anyone has any questions or comments, you're welcome to ask, once we have our first motion.
I'll make the motion.
I'll second.
Motion from Mr. Heil, second from Ms. Nolan. Do we have any questions or comments from council or the public? Great. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Are there any opposed? That motion carries. Thank you. And Mr. Truman, how many years is this going on where we don't change the mileage?
Excuse me, 2025 will be 16 years without a tax, property tax increase.
Yeah, huge kudos to your team and yourself on continuing to make sure that we are responsible in Bridgeport for our finances and do a good job of that, so thank you to you. Next up here for council consideration, we have adoption of the 2025 budget, and before we do that, Mr. Truman, do we have any comments about if any changes had happened, or any details that we want to notify everyone of?
Thank you, President Alzayed. No, there have been zero changes since, since our last meeting when, when the capital and sewer were, excuse me, capital and liquid fuels were presented, sewer in general, or presented the meeting before that, and we, we advertised and, as we're required to per Pennsylvania Borough Code, and yes, what was presented over the course of the last couple of months is what is on the agenda for adoption.
Great. Thank you, Mr. Truman. So if anyone's interested in that, in those details and missed the last couple of meetings, they are recorded and online. I encourage you to go through and take a look if you do have an interest, but with that, do we have a motion to adopt the budget for 2025?
I'll make the motion.
A second.
Motion for Mr. Heil, second for Ms. Nolan. Do we have any questions or comments from council or the public?
Yeah, I would just say, one, I, I wasn't here at the last meeting, so I do appreciate Mr. Truman, Ms. Long, and others who have worked hard to maintain a balanced budget over these years. It's not difficult, and I know that a lot of the reason we've been able to balance a budget is because of the good work from everyone on the borough staff, from the police and the workers to management and, and solicit everyone involved. I know that that can't last forever in terms of having the resources to have a balanced budget, but to be able to do that now is very commendable, and part of the reason we'll be able to balance a budget is because over the years, we've made Bridgeport a place where people want to invest their homes and businesses, which is another reason for us to continue to be as pro-growth and smart about bringing people in to build more housing here, which helps everybody in general, so I just want to say I appreciate all the hard work that went into that, and I know that there are a number of budget items, Mr. Truman, that we, as a finance committee, will want to review at the beginning of the year to see how it's dispersed throughout the year on a monthly basis, and so we maintain as much of a balanced budget as we can throughout the year and don't wait until the end, so thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Heil. So we have the motions, I believe. Do we have any additional questions or comments? All those in favor?
Aye.
Are there any opposed? That motion carries. Thank you. Last item up here on the agenda is for council consideration, authorization of bills and salaries for December 2024, and now those bills and salaries go till the end of the month, unlike usual when we kind of are up until the date where we're passing it, so this allows us to pass all the bills and salaries up until the end of this year.
Sub moved.
Second.
I have a motion for Mr. Shank, a second for Ms. Gundrum. Do we have any comments or questions from council or the public? Did I say that right, Mr. Truman?
You did, yes.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? That motion carries. Thank you. We are all tied up with our agenda items when it comes to voting. We can move on to unfinished business. Do we have any items of unfinished business? Seeing there's none, do we have any committee reports? All righty, we can move on to the mayor's report. Mayor Jack's here.
Great, thank you. Good evening, everyone. Just please remember that if you'd like to assist the Bridgeport Police Department with their annual holiday shopping event at Target to make the holidays brighter for families in the borough, the event will be taking place next Tuesday, December 17th at 10:00 a.m. Please reach out to Officer Matt Stad to register. And just as a reminder that if you haven't yet completed your holiday shopping, to make sure that you search around the borough for fantastic gifts and gift, gift cards that will help support local businesses. Every dollar you spend in Bridgeport helps a business owner who is invested in our community and will continue to make this an even better borough to live in. And finally, I wish everyone a wonderfully happy holiday season, so regardless of what you celebrate, if anything, we're lucky to have you as a member of this community, and we're all looking forward to a bright 2025 with you all in it, so thank you.
Beautiful. Thank you, Mayor Jack's here. Next up, we have the Chief's report.
Good evening, Bridgeport. As was previously noted by the President, we've been conducting extra enforcement. I monitor social media pages. I, I listen to what people say, whether they call or talk to somebody, I do listen, so I was out there too with my Honda CR-V pulling cars over, over the last, last two weeks especially. So both Union and Holstein Streets have had extra enforcement on there. There's probably been in excess of 40 police stops over the last week or so, just on those two streets. As we head into the poor weather, posting something onto the borough site about emergency management and packets for poor weather, what to keep in your car, what to look for in your houses, so just for the purpose of staying prepared, please take a look at our website, and thank you to the, to FEMA for presenting that information. It's good information. If you're going to be driving when we get into the cold, wet, snowy weather, please make sure to use your headlights and your windshield wipers, and specifically pay and leave enough time when going, coming and going, especially at 8:00 a.m. to 9:00 a.m. and 3:00 to 4:00 p.m. in the school zones. Wanted to report, we had 24 arrests last month for different, different things, many for theft, multiple DUIs, but the crimes are being reported. We have a very high level of clearance, and I'm proud of the guys to deal with the work that comes our way and that we're there for your interest to take care of that. The Christmas and holiday house lighting, every year, the Bridgeport Police Department between the 22nd and 25th of December, while on patrol in the evenings, they take, make a list of not who's naughty or nice, but whose houses are the most brightly lit and interesting, and then we come up with each ward, a winner for each ward and an overall winner, so if you haven't done so, get your, whoever your significant other is to put the lights up if you haven't already done so, because I'll be having to do that myself, and be competitive for the season. You can stop by the Police Department. It's well lit. We have our talking, dancing Santa Claus, along with a new addition of a laded Christmas, fake Christmas tree, plus our other normal decorations, so please stop by, and then as time goes by, we'll have some little gifts for, for, for the kids, so stop by with your kids. In conjunction with civil service, the Police Department completed the Oral Board section of a testing process to enable Bridgeport to move forward in the coming year and have a list to civil service, so I expect that civil service will be responding to, to the completed materials shortly, so thanks to Chief Tim Troxel-Talminson and Chief Mike Kelly of West Norton for giving well of their time and assisting us with this endeavor. January, we're going to be coming into the West Point Command and Leadership Academy. We're going to have two of our sergeants attend that. It's a very, it's an excellent, it's an excellent three-month-long coursework, very involved, teaches leadership theory, and I challenged both of them, and they rose to the challenge to, to take on that training. Or just to give you an idea of our, through traffic over the last 30 days through November, we had about 700 and, almost 770,000 vehicles going down the DeKalb Street corridor, so just gives you an idea. That's all I have for you. Stay warm, Bridgeport.
Chief, I had a, I'm sorry. I just had a quick comment and a question. All good stuff. First of all, the comment with, I know a lot of people have been talking about speeding in certain parts of Bridgeport, and I appreciate that you've been pulling people over. Not only, I have seen you pull people over, and I almost got pulled over myself because I was distracted watching that. I was like, hey, that's the chief doing it, so I, I've seen it firsthand. You make, you make great comments on Facebook and a lot of posts, but I think especially during the holiday season, let people know in those posts, because a lot of people read them, just how, what that work has been, what's going on, because I think there's going to be a lot of people who aren't from Bridgeport, driving through town for the holidays or driving around, and so notifying people about the enforcement, I think will make people feel better, because I, I know that people don't know how much enforcement you have been doing, so getting that word out there, I think, is important. And then a question, I, I appreciate you saying that we have a very high clearance rate. I wonder, is there anything that, has that been improving? Do you know any reason why it's improving? That's great news. I just want to get your insight in terms of anything that's good that's going on that we can make sure to help you with in the future.
So it's societal. Right now, we have homeless populations not residing in Bridgeport, but traveling through Bridgeport, mental health, and petty theft or retail theft. Sometimes it could be a felony because of the amount of time someone has been arrested or a summary offense, and up, the Wawa call us, so 15 of the 24 arrests were directly related to, to Wawa. We responded, and of those 15 arrests, or of the, the total amount, we made 15 arrests and probably had 20 calls, so we were right on top of it. We were identifying people and taking them to Eagleville, the Montgomery County Prison to be processed. Those people that we can help, we help, but as you see across our country, whether big city or small city, stores, businesses, et cetera, are inundated, and some of them are closing their doors. They're closing their doors because of crime rates and shortages, so we want to make sure that any of our businesses here, we're, we're going to be responsive to the needs of our citizens, whether it's a package theft from a porch, or people stealing 30, or attempting to steal 30 energy drinks to sell on the street in some other place in Bridgeport, so hopefully that, that was helpful.
So I assume that means that part of the reason the clearance rate's easy, better, is people responding more quickly, both in terms of letting you guys know, hey, this is happening, and just your presence in certain locations where there's a higher rate, so that's, that's a positive, something to just replicate in the future.
Correct. It was, or making sure that crime is, crime is going to be there. Let's just face it head-on and be honest about it, and call. Don't call or talk about it after the fact on Facebook a week later. Call us immediately when it's going, when it's going on, let us do something about it. We can evoke change. We can call Mobile Crisis for people that need it. We could try to get people to Guadenzia for inpatient treatment as a diversion, or we can cite, cite end or arrest, so give us that opportunity to help you and your businesses in Bridgeport by calling us while it's going on.
Thank you, Mr. Heil. Those good points. Thank you, Chief. Does anyone have any other questions for Chief? All right, we can move on to new business. I know that one of the items that we wanted to chat through in new business is potentially canceling the next borough meeting. Is there a way that we're supposed to go about this other than, is it a motion that we'd have to? Yeah, okay.
I would make a motion to formally cancel the second December council meeting. Because our, yes, we should elaborate, because, because we've passed our budget on time, and in fact, we shouldn't continue to do business until, until next year, because the budget's been passed now.
I will second canceling the meeting because the budget's passed.
All right, we have a motion for Mr. Shank, second for Mr. Heil. Do you have any questions or comments from council or the public? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Are there any opposed? That motion carries. Thank you. Hope to see you all in the new year. All right, are there any other items of new business? All right, we can move on to open forums and announcements. Do we have any items for this section? All right, seeing there is none, we can move on to public comment. Are there any members of the public that would like to comment this evening?
Just wish everyone a happy holiday.
I have, I'm on.
Just state your, I'm sorry, can you state your, just your name and your address for the record?
And I'm on Second Street, and recently I found out that my medications that I inject once a week from my physician, the pharmaceutical company feels that they don't need to send Sharps containers anymore, so they suggested that I put them in a laundry detergent that, of, container like this, and marked them, do not recycle, and put them in the trash. Normally, they would go back to the pharmaceutical company, and they would incinerate them, and they would pay for the postage to have the container come to my house. I would fill it, and then they would send it, I would send it back. They would pay for it. Apparently, now in the state of Pennsylvania, they don't have to do that anymore. I don't know how it got deregulated, but, so I have Sharps containers. My husband also has needles he uses, and my daughter also has needles that she uses, so this is a combination of the three of us. I'm not comfortable with just throwing this out in the trash. I mean, I don't think anybody can do anything. They said to seal the cap, but, I mean, I have probably about 200 or more syringes, and, you know, I wouldn't want my kid, if they were young, to get a hold of this. You know, they'll get curious and see and be like, okay, what is this? You know, so, and Saba and I had talked about, you know, maybe that there would be a place that we could drop them off through the borough to have them incinerated or just gotten, you know, gotten disposed of, so.
Thank you for sharing. I think it's, I know, it's, it's an important topic, one that I was not aware of. I don't use any needles, so I wasn't thinking about them, so it's really nice that we get to have conversations with the residents, and I appreciate you coming and approaching me about the topic, and I know Ms. Nolan and I had some great conversations, and she had some really good ideas about maybe having some services here. Obviously, we'd love to chat with council a bit more about something like that, but I, we threw a poll up on, I threw a poll up on Facebook to kind of gauge what this looked like, and I think I was surprised, and I didn't realize how many applications this kind of went across, or like how many different ways this could be applicable, so, so I was kind of glad to learn more about it. Did some personal research, but I think, you know, I'm not an expert at this. I do think there's some options out there, but I really appreciate you bringing it to our attention and kind of being the voice for it in Bridgeport, and I promise you we'll have some kind of update for you soon.
Yeah, there's certain medications you can't just, you know, pop a pill and it's done, so.
Agreed, and I think, you know, everything gets crushed, so if it gets crushed, and then now we have needles getting crushed, and then they're flying, you know, there's just like, oh, so many things my brain goes to, so.
Right, gets a hold of it and, you know, decides, oh yeah, let's open it and see.
Mrs. Smith, is that like, is that a month for you, multiple months?
I have injections once a week, so it's several months.
Okay.
Yeah, it's several months.
So if this was something we were to explore, if it would be a collection that would be a monthly or twice a month, will have something available? Because I think what, I think what a lot of people will be concerned about, and what I will be concerned about, would just be having a, a drop slot at Borough Hall that's available all the time. I don't know that that would be the direction we'd want to go for a lot of reasons, but for, you know, folks like you who daily, weekly, monthly have an injection, and you already, you, you have your, your detergent cans.
Twice a year would be fine. I can show you.
Yeah, oh, no, it's okay. I believe you. No, I believe you. Well, I guess I'll take a look. No, my question was just.